Good afternoon and welcome to our one o'clock work session for the Cleveland City Council. Today, Monday, June the ninth, and we will call our work session to order. The first item on the agenda is special presentations and public comments. Cadet First Lieutenant Kid, do you know if Daniel Coob is able to join us for this?
I do not believe so, sir.
All right, if you would join me, Lieutenant, at the podium, I have a presentation for you.
Hi, First Lieutenant.
It's Captain Nelson.
Captain, you got promoted?
Captain.
Okay, well, I gotta fix your certificate then. See, we gotta redo it.
Surprise!
Okay. Well, in special recognition and appreciation for your outstanding service to the city of Cleveland, by volunteering to lower and raise flags on all half-staffed days at the city municipal building, the county courthouse, the county annex, and all other public buildings for the last eight years, I believe you're the longest-serving flag century in the history of Bradley County.
Seems like it.
And you're so young. We wish you well in all your future endeavors as you continue your service to your city, your community, and your country, and we are grateful for your service, Captain Kid.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
She outranks me.
Thank you, sir.
One more.
Oh, one more?
Oh, one more.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll edit that into the paper. Captain Kid, thank you for your service, and that takes us, we have a couple of folks that have requested to speak to the council, I believe the first is Mr. Coulter. If you would please identify yourself at the podium and state your name for the record. Thank you, sir, welcome.
I'm Dave Coulter, live in District One. The instant thing that brought me here this morning for this afternoon is city code enforcement. Got a letter from them in May, grass was too high, which I agree with them on that point. However, that brought up a whole string of events with them. I work at keeping my lawn cut, I actually like to keep it tidy as much as I can. However, when I got the letter, I had actually just cut the grass when I got the letter, and I called their office to talk to them, and there's nobody there to answer the phone. You can leave a message, nobody will respond. My discontent with city code enforcement began years ago. House across the road, Mrs. Bryson's house, at 8:20, burned down a few years ago. Didn't burn completely down, it got burned out, and the insurance company wouldn't pony up to rebuild it. They said they wouldn't bring it up to code. Anyways, I talked with Clancy about that years ago, and I understood the basic gist of it. The house got bought by some folks out of Atlanta, Georgia. Their lawn and that burned-out house has stood there. My wife called code enforcement many times, trying to get them to do something about it. I don't know what all she did, my wife died in '22, so I don't know the extent of what she did or how she did it, but she voiced a lot of frustration with city code enforcement as well. Last year, I went, it was going on three months of, I'd go to work in the morning, come home, I went to bed. Been dealing with a little bit of depression. And got one of the city code enforcement letter last year as a result. I didn't check my mail for over two months, so by the time I got the letter, it was like three days later, my lawn got cut. I was waiting for the bill because while cutting my grass, they also cut down eight blueberry bushes that I had just planted that I got from fast-growing trees I spent over $600 on, and they hacked them all down along with the hay that I was growing. I've been looking forward to that bill because then I was gonna be finding somebody to meet up in small claims court. I understand the need for city code enforcement, I understand the need for sending out letters. If you're gonna send me a letter, by God, answer the phone, be there to respond, to have a conversation. Personal issues don't negate my responsibility to keep my property tidy. But if the city's gonna send out letters, they need to be available to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter, I agree, and I'm grateful that you came by to let us know that, and the city manager's here. Mr. Fivas, do you have a response?
Can we get, I did not get your address.
Yeah, it's, uh... Sorry. 823 Dockery.
Dockery?
Yeah. It's on the corner of Blackburn and Dockery.
I would accentuate upon what the mayor said is, certainly that's not acceptable. And would you like, would you like a return phone call?
I would.
Okay. If you can make sure, there's a woman named Beverly over there, get her phone number, and we'll make sure that the appropriate person can contact you and work through the issues that, whether it's the burned-out house and all that other stuff. We do apologize, and certainly we'll look into it and see what's going on.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. All right, Ms. Councilman McKenzie, you had one more person that you...
I'm not sure if I was there.
Thank you for coming, and if you'll state your name, please, for the record.
Good afternoon, everyone, I am Caitlin Bunham. Wednesday last week, me and my daughter was turning onto Dalton Pike, right there where the light is, there's a Walmart, you can go straight, and then there's like the Walgreens, and there's like a checking of cash or whatever on the side. So anyways, we were in the turning lane to go onto Dalton Pike, it was the right turning lane, and we were turning, and there was an 18-wheeler in the straight lane that you would go to Walmart, but he turned, he turned with us. So it could have been very traumatic, but we, I mean, I came to complete stop right there, and he turned, and then I took pictures of his truck and stuff and had a conversation with him. So anyways, he, in our conversation, he told me that he didn't realize that it was an attorney lane, so I was wondering if maybe we could get some like signs or something up there, because this is not the first time this has happened to me, but this time, a 14-month-old was in the backseat with me, so it kind of made it concerning, and obviously, like, my rage, I'm sure you guys have children and stuff, and you can only imagine how furious I was, just because like, I mean, if I wasn't paying attention, he could have took us out. So like I said, I don't know, he was an 18-wheeler, he had a trailer on his truck, so, I mean, it could have definitely took us out, so, yeah, that's just kind of my...
Thank you.
What I need to write to him.
Ms. Bunham.
You were working at Walmart, taking a ride on the Wildwood.
Well, I'm so sorry, I was taking a left onto Dalton Pike, so there's those two lanes there.
Turn lanes.
Mm-hmm, and I was in the right turn lane.
Okay.
And he was in the straight lane to go, like you would go towards Walmart.
Right.
But he turned with us. So I had to come to a complete stop, the whole time I was like blowing my horn at him and all of that, but, and my daughter is in the right side.
It's a congested, it's a goofy area.
Yeah, and I mean, like, I've lived here in Cleveland all my life, I've lived off of Dalton Pike all of my life, so, like I said, this has happened a few other times, but this time was just, it was very scary, and so I reached out, and she told me to come here today, so here I am. So, I mean, if you guys would kind of look at that area and see what we can do about kind of fixing that.
Well, we're very happy that you came by, we're very thankful to hear that you're okay.
Yes.
Mr. Shaley is here, he's the Director of Safety, and we will make sure that your comments at that intersection of Treasury Drive and Dalton Pike and all of those lanes, David, make sure that...
Yeah, I mean, they're marked pretty well, like, I went back and looked, I mean, but he's high up, so he's not paying attention to, you know, the marked lanes, so, so maybe some signs there.
It's got really congested right there.
Yes.
Now, you've got all day with a car wash and water, it's all, how, you know, it's...
It is, it's...
I've been in your situation up there.
Yeah.
Daddy, we can go walk around the next one, okay?
Mayor, I would like to do kind of a study there, especially concerning the big trucks, because that is a very congested area, and I don't know if there's any way to take them around another way, or put better signage, or whatever, but I would appreciate looking at that.
All right, I'll make sure that that's duly noted. Mr. Fivas, thank you, Councilwoman, thank you, Ms. Bunham.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the council? All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the council at this time? Well, seeing none, we will close the public comments, anyone else? All right. Yes, ma'am? If you'll state your name.
Yes, hi, I'm Linda Kern, and May 17th, there was an accident on our street, 17th Street, 1209 17th Street is my address, and I wrote Ms. McKenzie, I wrote Mr. Webb, I wrote Mr. Moore, and Mr. Shaley a note about this, so they're aware of it. I want to explain what happened. Our street is on a hill, and cars come over very, very, very quickly over the hill, it's like a racing lane, and they come very down fast over the hill, and it's been a problem for a series of years. Well, this individual came flying down the hill, went through two yards, two yards, meaning the yards of people on the street, ran through a barrel filled with flowers, smashed that to smithereens, a rock wall, totally went through the rock wall, leveled a tree, a small tree, so it was inside of about 25 yards of two yards, two people's property. And it came to stop right up, excuse me?
Was this Coach Logston, two yard, okay, I'm just a pointer reference.
Yes, sir.
It was wrestling coaches, Logston, right?
Steve Logston is our neighbor, yes, sir.
That's right, okay.
Yes, sir, yes. Yes, and you may have heard from him. So it was his yard, and they came through. Now, Mr. Dale, and I'm forgetting his last name, it will come to me in a minute, but he, he has, he's the other yard. He has two young sons, about seven and nine, if they had been playing in their yard, they may easily have been killed. So the car stopped right opposite my house, I'm on the other side of the road, and it was smoking. I speak Spanish, so I thought, maybe this is somebody who speaks Spanish, I went out and I said, usted habla en español. She certainly did. What I did not realize, and neighbors told me, they had switched drivers, so the backseat drivers went into the front seat, the front seat drivers came into the backseat. The woman got out, and she said immediately, please don't deport me, please don't deport me, you know, I have kids in Mexico. I love Hispanic people, I, but I said to her, listen, I have no authority to either deport you, to arrest you, or to do any of that, do you see what damage you did to our neighbors? You could have hurt somebody very badly. Meanwhile, the car is fuming, and the guy, the next to her guy, who had been in the front seat, was now in the backseat, got out, his blood is streaming out of his face. I said, he needs to go to the hospital, I'm saying this in Spanish, and he says, oh, no, I'm okay, I'm okay. So while we're doing this, that car, very slowly, is edging down to the bottom of 17th Street, where it intersects with Woodland Street, I believe that's the name of it, and then it goes on to Georgetown, so the car is moving. I turned to look at the property damage, and to look at my neighbors, and all of a sudden, that lady disappears, the lady and the man with blood streaming down his face. All right, so, my point is, in all of this, is to say, this is a safety concern. We've asked before that speed bumps be put on our road, or perhaps even a gate or a fence at the end of 17th, and I believe it's, I'm forgetting the name of the other one, I will look that up. It's a, it's a road that goes down to the apartments, I will, I will figure out that name. But anyway, they use this as a cut-through, and I'm saying, this is a problem. It has been a problem for the three years that we've lived in this house, it's been a problem with our neighbors, they've seen it before, and I'm just worried that it will come to being a fatality with somebody. So I'm asking, please, to either put speed bumps on 17th Street, this is Northwest 17th Street, or a gate, or a fence, something, to deter fast-traveling motors coming through there. And they've done it once before, where they had a police presence there, and they did come, and they came for a week or two, and then they disappeared. So I just don't want to see it come to a death on our street, and it really scared all of our neighbors.
Certainly.
So I'm here to just speak to that.
Thank you, Ms. Kern, for coming, and as Councilman Moore indicated, we also have heard from Coach Logston. In fact, Mr. Fivas, I believe you were involved in that response to Mr. Logston's email, could you give Mrs. Kern an update on, on the things that have been done?
Well, I mean, certainly, we appreciate coming and sharing the story. You know, after they took off, our police apprehended them, and I believe, and our chief isn't here today, but they were arrested.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, they were both arrested for drug driving, and certainly, it's unconscionable to do that. And so, so that's another factor, not only with the speeds and then all those other issues. We've done speed studies in the past there, you know, the traffic isn't, you don't have a huge volume of traffic, occasionally you'll have, like on many streets, some fast-moving cars, we're happy to do another review of the speeds and see if there's anything that has changed since the last time that we've looked at that. But that was probably, the only thing I could add is that they were arrested for drug driving, and, I don't know, do you have anything else to add to that, Captain?
No, sir, they were arrested, they were also leaving the scene of an accident, some others, Mr. Mayor Jordan, they were apprehended, about 15 minutes after that.
Do I have permission to ask a question? Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So I've heard from the police, because I said to them, please tell me, help me to understand, does this mean that this person, it was a woman, will get deported for this? And he said, no, but she just left the scene of an accident, so she committed an accident, you know, property damage and all, and she left the scene of an accident. One of our neighbors is very interested in finding about police work and all that, she knows that this individual was caught and released within a week, she's out on the streets again. I understand it's an alcohol problem, I understand it's a legal problem, I understand it's a safety problem. Should we appeal to a judge in this area just to say, you know, individuals who are driving should not be driving without a license, as this individual was, under the influence, and did property damage, which I don't know if there's any compensation for our neighbors for the property damage, but I think that's three levels of concern that I just wanted to be sure of, and I don't know what else to do, except to appeal to you guys.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Kern, we are very grateful that you're here, and we
Thank you.
understand your concerns.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Fivas? And thank you, Captain, for your additional expertise. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during this public comments section? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our next item on the special presentations, which is Mr. Fivas and the fiscal 2026 budget presentation.
I have one of my patented long PowerPoints that hopefully we can get through fairly quickly. I think you can see that up there. The, as you know, we're, this is the start of our, our budget process, it's a little bit, it's usually about a month later than we usually go through our budget process, mostly because of the reappraisal of a property in Tennessee that occurs every four years. So we usually, on these, every four years, have a little bit later process to allow the county assessor to reappraise the property. So, moving forward, we talked about that we are a fiscally conservative organization, and because of that, we need to also strategically invest at the right times. Want to talk a little bit about, and I think we need to, I think, all pat ourselves on the back for a lot of the accomplishments we've had over the last seven years. We've been working on, on $138 million infrastructure investments, we're in the third year of that, and it's a combination of state and federal projects and local projects, and we're going along and looking to conclude that at the end of this fiscal year. Since 2018, we've completed 169 capital projects, and 57 of them are large projects. We've completed seven miles of new sidewalks, our new park system will be renovated before the end of 2025, and we're changing the economic climate in the downtown with a lot of the changes and investments that the council has made. We've also added two miles of greenway and three new parks, and for our public safety services, in the fire department, we've, since 2018, we've increased the budget from $8.1 million to $13.3, which is adding a number, a new station, a number of new employees, adding to a lot of the capital investments that we've had there. And the police department, we've had a similar increase from $9.1 to $14.3 million, so we've have done significant investment in our public safety services in Cleveland. The city schools, we constructed the $15 million new elementary school, the Candice Creek Elementary School. The administrative building has been opened, and then there was also a new addition on to the elementary school. We've had a lot of success in Blythe Oldfield and College Hill on partnering with other nonprofits to invest in our lower-income areas. We have a number of new housing starts and that require single-family owners to buy in those areas. And we've also, as we noted last year, we were the number one in the state of Tennessee for industrial recruitment and bringing jobs to a local area, and that includes Nashville or Knoxville or Memphis, so I think that we should take a bow, and I think we've been very successful on walking, looking back and moving forward. The name of this presentation is "Growing Forward," so, but I think it's also good to look back and appreciate what the council has accomplished. One thing that we all know that we're working through in Cleveland and Tennessee is looking at growth in Cleveland and Tennessee, and it's not just the Cleveland area, by looking at this map, you know, the state of Tennessee is predicted to grow by two or three million people over the next several decades. So it's not, it's, it's just a migration largely from the Northeast, a lot of people from Florida coming back halfway, and people from out West moving to our area because of our quality of life and our low taxes, and I think that we should all take credit for that and appreciate where we live. So, looking at Cleveland's growth, we hired a third party, it was a part of a study that we did in the town, but they did a population estimates, and what the population estimate showed is that we would grow to 86,712 by 2045. So that's what we came up with, and, and, you know, with the growth that we've seen, you know, we're, we have to plan accordingly and look at... have to plan accordingly and, and look at there. There's been some other studies, not as, as recent, that have showed in the seventies, so somewhere between seventy and eighty is kind of where we should probably end up as far as looking at the trends of where people are moving to live. So what that means is that we really have two options. We either we invest in, in our community, keep our pace barely above water, or that will be crushed by a tighter wave of growth. As someone before, obviously moved to this area, my in-laws are from Loudoun County, as you know, and we came from North Carolina, who was the eighth fastest growing city in the country. And the key for growth is being able to continually invest. If you, if you let your foot off the pedal, it will catch up with you, and you will file, fall behind exponentially if you, if you decide to take a decade off or something like that. We have some decision, business decisions to make. You know, as I've, as I was saying, invest in infrastructure and services, or see our business plans fail. A lot of times, what happens in cities, and we can go into this in much greater detail, in my experience in, as you know, from regularly being from Michigan, is, is that you have, in the Northeast, that you have center cities. And to a large degree, you saw it kind of happen in Chattanooga, where your inner core isn't redeveloped enough, and, and you fall behind, and, and you have environmental issues and property value issues. And we don't want that to, to come and be here, because usually what happens is, you have the growth start going around outside of the city. And, and you can see in, in large degree that that's happening here. We have been able to annex a lot of those properties, which means that those are also paying taxes to our area and being able to keep that. But once there's a ring around the city, a lot of times, you're, if you don't redevelop, you will be suffocated by the lack of redevelopment and lower property values. I could probably talk for a couple hours on that. That is my, my four sentence version of life cycle of cities. Financial outlook, outlook for, for Cleveland, we, we have a very strong financial outlook. Our audits continue to be clean. Through our council management, our budgets continue to be fiscally conservative. Several years ago, we finished a process in which we saved ten million dollars by redoing all of our debt. At one time, we had forty-five percent variable debt, and now we have, I'm sorry, that we had only forty-five percent fixed debt, and now we have about ninety-seven percent fixed debt. And that was before we knew of the interest rates going up. If you could imagine if the council would not have acted with the impetus that it did to correct that, we would be having compounded interest rates that we would have to resolve. But right now, we have most of our debt in a one point three interest rate for most of our refinanced debt, which is, I think, a significant accomplishment for the city council. As we talked about, and this is probably the most important page that, that we can look at right now, is that I talked initially about reevaluation. Through that process, they look at your tax rate, and they, the state actually does a calculation, and they give us a new tax rate. Our previous tax rate was considered to be a dollar seventy-one, and our new tax rate will be a dollar twenty-three, one six. So you, you do that math, and you're at about sixty-eight cents lower than what you had been before. And, and, and I think that, that's, that's a significant drop. Values in the community went up, but our tax rate will go down. So what, what does this mean, you know, when you benchmark the city against other, other communities? Are we doing good, bad, medium? Is that in Cleveland, at, at our new rate, we went through, and you see that some of the other communities are also going through revaluation. So these are the freshest numbers that, that we could find, is that with all, and these are all schools, are all communities with city schools. So they're, they're apples to apples. The only thing that's different about that is that we actually are the only city, probably in the world, but certainly in Tennessee, that gives part of our proper sales tax to the county. So we're actually at a lower, we're actually discounted for something that happened in the sixties. So, but you see the property tax rates for a lot of those communities. And the average property tax rate for the certified tax rate with communities that are city schools, these are communities that are very, very much like Cleveland. They operate, they feel, they have the same people that live in them, same business bases. So you're talking, you know, dollar ninety-seven versus our tax rate is a dollar twenty-three. Well, how can we make that happen? How, how do we do that? And the issue is, what is, what does this tell us? And I think, and it's something that, that we've talked about before, is that we probably are the most efficient city that I've ever come across, but certainly that I'm aware of. You know, we have probably one of the best fire departments in, in the state of Tennessee. And, you know, with our investment, you know, they are an ISO two rated. Our police are above, there's no one that's better than the services that we provide from a public safety standpoint. Our Public Works, as you know, is, is full service, you know, the benefits that we get from picking up of the garbage and the trash and doing projects that it's, I'm certain that it's the best in the state. And all of our other departments are very, very lean. Most cities of our size will have six, seven people in human resources, six, seven people in, in IT services. And we, we usually do with about half of what other organizations do. And I take that as a testament, and I think the council does, as a badge of honor, that, that we're able to provide the highest level service at the lowest cost. And, and sometimes it's, it's difficult, but it also brings a lot of pressure, and we also have to be able to react when inflation goes up on all of those items, labor wages go up, and those are all the things that we're, we're looking at. You know, to, to give you something to think about, and no, I'm not, I'm not proposing this, nor do I think it's an achievable goal. If we were to have a, if we were to be average on a tax rate with city school, that, communities that have city schools, every year, we would have probably seventeen to eighteen million dollars extra that we could spend every year off the top. It's sixty-eight times two thirty-six, or whatever our pennies worth now. So I'm not advocating for that. We don't need eighteen, seventeen million dollars extra. But that's kind of what the average community in our operations, that's what they have to deliver services and capital projects in there. We feel really good about that, and, but we also need to be real about that. If our population is going to go up to eighty-six thousand people, we need to make sure that we're making the right investments as we go along. There are five necessary public investments that the city needs to look at over the next five years. Apologize for that. You know, there, these are, you know, this budget is, I'll get to in a minute. It is a balanced budget. We, everything, our needs, our projects, and our services are taken care of within our, within our budget now. But as you look at this, these waves starting to crop out and come at us with the population figures, with some of the other growing, growth trends that we've seen, we have to also take pride in also being out in, ahead of those waves. The first item is street paving. Since 2017, we've invested about one point three million dollars on paving on an annual basis. And this was actually an increase, because we, we increased it by three or four hundred thousand dollars about then to get up to a sustainable pace at that time for what our contract was. Since that time, if you look at the amount that we pay for asphalt, our main ingredient in, in delivering that services, and this is contracted, we've lost forty percent of our buying power. So we're doing forty percent less streets every year now, because that's just, this is how much money we have, and we pave until we run out of money. And, and, and I think that, that's some area, the, the tricky part about this is it's not just forty percent every year, it compounds on itself. Right now, we're probably a couple years behind, just with a compounding factor. If you wait another four or five years and don't address it, you could be five or six years behind in our road system. And I think we're starting to see, I think we're starting to see some of that, just driving around specifically in a lot of our neighborhoods. So that's one area that, that at some point, we need to address actively. We're running out of space for our recreational facilities. If you were to ask the aquatics teams, you know, a lot of people from the schools here, I'm sure if I asked them, well, how's, how's that denting center doing? I'm sure that they would say, it's going to be good for another twenty years. But, but we know that it's not. It's already forty or fifty years old. Same thing with our, with our, where we play soccer. We have over a thousand people, or the Greater Cleveland Soccer Association has over a thousand people signed up, and they play two different seasons. And, and they, they don't have enough fields. They're asking us for more fields right now. What happens when our population goes up even further? And you're seeing a real interest in lacrosse, seven-on-seven football, which, which we can't really actively do, and just keeping up with all the adult leagues. You know, we have a Shepherd Field and Avery Johnson Park, that there's a lot of adult soccer that's played out there. We can't keep up with the damage that, that happens. It just really, the, the fields get chewed up. That's really great, because people are using them, but it's also very difficult from a standpoint. We did recently do a sports tourism study, which we'll, I think, talk a little bit about later. The study shows investing in, in a flat field environment, in an indoor field environment, would bring about one point four million dollars of new revenue to the city each year. It would create sixty-eight thousand new hotel nights, and it would have forty-one million dollars of new investment for our local businesses. And there's a, there's a lot more, many more pieces of that. But just to get the sense that regardless of the sports tourism piece, how are we going to provide services for flat fields, soccer, lacrosse, seven-on-seven football, just go in to play catch, a lot of those issues. The third investment, streets and transportation city, transportation safety and capacity. We've, we've talked about this briefly before, is that, is that the federal and state governments has identified Cleveland as a, as a community that has higher risk than normal for traffic safety. And we're the only city in the Tennessee that was given that honor. And, and it's something that we're actively trying to do a safety study, and they, they give you a cue, and they help you do a study to help, well, what's causing the, the accidents that are happening, the, the deaths by either pedestrians or people driving. And that's where you start seeing that, that widening some roads, continue to do sidewalks, a lot of those issues need to be worked on. There's certainly an element of law enforcement. You know, today, we had Ms. Kern here talking about the speed. That is not the first time, to Mrs. Kern's credit, that there are a number of streets that we have issues with speeding, not following the law, and a lot of those other issues. And we, quite frankly, really need to, and we've had conversations with the police, we've had conversations with our engineers, and we are working as diligently as possible to figure out, well, how do we, how do we, how do we move forward? You know, at some point, do we have to have different criteria for putting out speed tables, traffic tables? And, you know, I don't know if Ms. Kern's would, would, would qualify for that, but those are the things that we, everything has to be on the table and look at. We're not ready for a recommendation now, but over the next five years, we have to really get into that and look at those items. Number four is that we need to continue our investment in public safety. We have invested very heavily into police and fire. As you see with their budgets from 2015, now going up nearly five million dollars apiece in each of those, that's just on an annual basis. That doesn't include, you know, in the budget, you have a new fire truck that's going to be coming in this next year. You know, the camera system that we went and toured with the police departments, we're working on some of those issues. Public safety is probably our greatest piece that, that people expect us to provide, and we have to continue to be ahead of the trend on that. Schools, there's a lot of experts here that know more about it than I do. You know, we have our school system, we've had, it's, our elementary and middle school have been kind of static. They've had a lot of ESL students, which has reduced some capacity. High school, we're seeing huge growth in the high school. You know, one thing, though, that we're seeing is that, that there are some large developments in the northern side of the, of our community that could generate thousand, two thousand new students. And are we ready for that? And trying to get out in front of those issues. And you can't, you can't just create and have school capacity. And, you know, one item there is that the county has a high level of city students going to county schools. That is driven, we believe, by the location where schools are located, because a lot of our new development is right around county, county schools. And, and we just need to really work and focus on how do we get our own city kids back into the city school system. Not their fault, not the school system's fault, but people usually go to school around where they live. And we have to step up and really look at, at how to address those issues now and in moving to the future. So take a quick segue. I had mentioned before, we have this hundred and thirty-eight million dollar investment in capital projects throughout the city. You know, we have two hundred and fifty thousand trips within the city on a, on a daily basis. That hits every single service. That is public works, that is police and fire, and that can, you know, people that get an accident on the freeway, we have to respond to those. If people, whatever it is, they, they essentially are our guests for that time that they're in our community. We are working through that. I, I think it's going to be one of the more understated things on, on if you go out at Paul Huff and see how beautiful that looks. If you go out to Georgetown, you see that infrastructure that's been created. You go down, and we've essentially rehabbed all of our parks. And remember, if we had a conversation a number of years ago, that we couldn't really start investing in new parks and there until we got our greenway up to where it needs to be, until we got our current facilities up to a standard that we think is great. And I, and I think that we're all very proud of the way our parks look and feel right now. So now we're to the budget, twenty-five, twenty-six budget presentation. This is a balanced budget. There's no tax rate to balance this budget. Everything that we're doing on this current year is funded. And I think that that's And I think that that's important. Continue with heavy investments for public safety. Have to catch up with my own. And we're in the third year of implementation of the Build Cleveland's Future Initiative. That's $138 million. In this budget, our fire department continues, that we continue to invest in our fire department. We go through a lot of that. We do have, we put in an order a couple of years ago that the council approved to order a fire truck. Unbelievably, it takes two years to build a fire truck. It is actually going to be here in 2026, so we have additional funding in the apparatus fund. It's usually about 300, and this year it's about 530,000. So we have that new facility, that new engine coming in. We have a couple of engines that cause us a lot of trouble, that we've had to spend a lot of money in maintenance, and this will be a good relief to not rely on those trucks that are, that are causing us problems. We have, at the fire training tower, we have a, right now, there's no restrooms out there. We don't have any training facility, even though it's called the fire training. So there is a metal building, it's purchased, and we will put that together, that will have restrooms, a little training facility, and a lot of storage. We may have a lot of different storage. You know, our public works may have storage in there, our police department may have storage, and we can use that facility for a lot of different things. But the key is, is having an actual place where you can go in, see videos, learn, and walk out, and then practice them at the fire training facility. The police department, same thing as we talked about, the salaries. We hired, we got a state grant a couple of years ago, three years ago, to fund three positions, and this is the first year that those three positions are coming back onto the city, so that was built into the budget. So essentially, it's three new positions, but they've been with us for a few years. We have the new body camera system that we purchased a couple of years ago. We're in the, I think, the fourth year of the five-year payments for that. We have the Greenway Public Safety, continue to build out cameras, continue to build our system that we had the opportunity to review. And it's almost on a weekly basis that they, that those public safety cameras are seeing either someone getting injured and we can help, or someone injuring someone and getting safety to them. And it's, I think it's going to be one of the most modernizing, using technology to help with our public safety. Then, Transportation and Environmental Services, the major streets, we fund those, we talked a little bit, and I'm not going to go back through, our city street paving. We do have in this budget $400,000 match to match the approximately $1.5 million from the state and federal government for construction of 10 new hangars. If you ask anyone in the aeronautics field, is that we have a huge list of people that want to have their planes and airplanes and to do business at our jet port. Keith is here. We appreciate what he has brought to the table and really doing some really fantastic things. And he's looking to make it as active and as a business venture. One thing that's happening in Chattanooga is they're expanding as well, but more commercial. So that's pushing out a lot of the private people, and there's a market there that we can go and get in, and it starts with building these 10 new units. And we probably need another 50, but it's very important for us to continue to make that an asset. Yes, sir.
You said 5-0-50?
That's about right. Is that right, Keith? I think you're here.
Yes, sir. I'll say that, that's kind of, I'd probably use more.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So that's a good thing in the budget, is to build 10 new hangars and having someone else pay for most of it. You know, public works have been allocated some funding. We have, our salt storage facility is literally falling apart because you probably, because you store salt in it. And so we have some money that we'll look at doing that. 25th and North Akoi Street, we continue to get feedback from the federal, the state, rather, that that project is being fast-tracked and they're moving forward. They came and gave a presentation to the community in February, I think, maybe it was March. And we're really pushing them. There was a couple of changes that they needed to make, and we continue to push them on making some changes that will help us on that. But the good thing is, there probably is not a worse traffic than 25th and North Akoi, is if, you know, usually you're sitting through at least one light. We have the Railroad Elimination Grant, which is the $33 million grant to, for our downtown redevelopment. We're still waiting for the funding obligation. I think Robert tries to talk to them almost every day. Their staff has been reduced, so things are slower. We don't have, we haven't had any indication that there's any bad news, but it's just been slower than what we anticipated. More on Transportation and Environmental Services, Atkinson Drive widening, that's one of our funded projects to do that. We're looking at trying to combine actually that intersection. This is another growth issue. We literally put four hotels and a number of new restaurants and potentially a hospital all at the corner of Frontage Road and Paul Huff. So we may try to do a lot of that at one time and trying to figure out so that it's seamless and that it's not disjointed, and we're looking at how to make that happen. But you have a restaurant that's going in at the corner, that they're actually, all of those places have invested something. We have a design, and they're building out to that, and we're working on how to make sure what they do makes sense with what we want to do. All good things, just complicated. Traffic Signal Initiative, at some point, we're going to have to bite the bullet and take over the traffic signal systems in, from Cleveland Utilities. Mouse Creek Road Turns, we do have some funding from before on turn, you know, probably the first turn that we would put in is, you know, we need to clean up from Mouse Creek all the way to Mohawk, and try to put in a better turn scenario there, and really make that more aesthetically pleasing through there. South Lee Highway Walkable Network and Gateway Improvements. We have a study that's out getting RFP right now to do a design for us in those areas. Street cut policy, we hope to work with many of the utility providers to look at costs for street cuts. We have the second, we'll have the second annual of the mayor's Elementary School Tree Initiative. Last year, we had a pilot project, which I thought was very successful at Arnold Elementary. Our goal is to really get out and try to do that at every elementary school every year. Last year, we learned some things in trying to figure out how to do that, planting trees, learning about bees, all environmentally friendly thing, but also meets our criteria for those programs, and incorporating the city schools and students is a bonus. Minus Road, Michigan Avenue, Central Avenue, we've started because of the new engineering building from Lee University, going at the corner of Parker and Central. You'll probably start seeing some construction from the railroad tracks all the way, on both sides of the road, all the way to trunk. We're going to do that first section and get that done as Lee University builds their new engineering school. We didn't want to put down new paving and do a lot of stuff with a huge construction site right there, but as they button up there and they get to the internal of their building, then that only leaves us a block, maybe two blocks, to finish off Central Avenue, which is definitely in the need of being redone and certainly repaved. It's really an awful condition. First Street Sidewalk Improvements, we have money budgeted for putting, finishing the sidewalk on First Street, and this is down in front of Taylor Springs Park, connecting in what will be Phase Six of the Greenway, and then repaving all of that because that's in poor condition as well. Then we'll also have parking alongside of the road that will add additional parking for a lot of those businesses down through there. Wrapping up in a couple of minutes, Development and Quality of Life, one of our key critical areas is to have the creation of the Downtown Arts and Entertainment District, and trying to figure out how, what that incorporates and what it doesn't incorporate, and trying to use that as a tool to help encourage investment in the downtown area. The mayor and I have had a number of meetings on that, and I think we made some progress. Downtown Revitalization, you know, we have the Phase Six of the Greenway, which would connect with Willow Street coming over essentially to the Starbucks. And that's a, you know, where, Robert tells me we're within days of getting the go-ahead to purchase right away for that, and hopefully that comes fruition. Have the Cherokee Hotel Revitalization, which is making significant progress. Sure looks good after they cleaned everything and working on that. Whirlpool, Brownfield and Redevelopment, we're just finishing up the Phase Two as the development agreement that we have with Phoenix, who is a property owner. Once we finish Phase Two, we have five days to close. That will probably happen at either June 23rd or July 14th. So that's coming up, in which we would have the owners of that property, and then start working with the state on, hopefully, Brownfield funding and federal funding to help clean up anything that needs to be cleaned up before we redevelop it. Parks and Rec Master Plan, we've been, actually been working on that a little bit, but that will be released in July. Basically, it goes through all the things that we need. One of the things that, probably the only thing I know about it is, is it identified that we don't have enough parks maintenance staff. This budget addresses some of that by adding some, but it certainly, I think it will be, will give a lot of good suggestions for us to look at. I already talked a little bit about the sports tourism, economic stuff, this is kind of the same stuff. Tinsley Park Redevelopment, it has one little line down there, and it's an absolutely massive project. Things are going along very well. We should have our bids back for June 23rd for the council to look at, and then we'll build, rehab two pavilions, build two additional pavilions, and have a new restroom, not to mention a new parking lot and new softball fields, new pickleball, and a lot of those other issues. It's a massive project, but that's our highest priority. In between all that time, we have, we got, received the grant to put a footsaw field at Blythe Oldfield Park. We have state funding to help with that, and essentially, it's a turf field with a little fence around it. If you ever went out there, there is no grass in that park, it's because every night they play soccer on it. So we got a grant to be able to put in turf and hopefully provide a nice little venue for people to work at. We have a nature park that we've talked about on Candy's Lane, new workout facility for the city. Tinsley Park improvements, and then Jim Sharp Park, which is fully under construction and which should be completed here in August, September, hopefully. Other areas and initiatives. The city will develop litter elimination program, IT services, we budgeted $270,000 in funding that were recommended to us from a security standpoint. We still have some other funding things in the IT world that need to be dealt with, and Sean and I are working at how to work through those. South Lee Highway, College Hill Initiatives, we have a cost of living increase, 3.5 salary We have our comp study. I have not seen anything, that should hit our desk sometime in the next couple of weeks. There is funding in the budget to hopefully take care of any costs with the comp study that come our way, and we're, be excited about when we get that. And I give our team a lot of credit for our, you know, our healthcare. We continue to save literally millions of dollars each year, at least hundreds of thousands of dollars on our healthcare, mostly with some of the programs that we have for our pharmaceuticals. And we've never been in a better position to pay for those services. With that, I'm certainly open to address any questions. Now, this is just this balanced budget, and there's some other questions that we can address. There's an item on the agenda at 3:00. I know that Jeff is going to talk at 3:00, but any questions on the budget or any ideas that you need me to go more in-depth on?
Any questions to the council? Councilman Goff?
Just a quick question on, on the budget, with Third Street, do we have funds in there for acquisition costs of property loan there?
We do. The council had allocated some funds in the last fiscal year, but we have some.
Any other questions from the council? All right. Saying none.
So now it's my turn to talk again?
If there are no other questions or comments from the council regarding the budget, it will transition, we will transition to the city manager's report, and then ultimately the review of the agenda for the rapidly approaching 3:00 meeting.
All right. The good news is I'm going to show you an item that is just something to think about. There is no, there is nothing that, vote you have to take. We have at Tinsley Park, the skate park. And one thing that has been suggested to us, and I said, well, I don't know about that, but we'll certainly, we'll talk about it. that, but we'll certainly, we'll talk about it," is a lot of, everything in Tinsley Park is either nets or fields and all of that, and it's been proposed that, and the, the skate park needed some renovations, and one thing that we identified is that there's a space at Greenway Park right behind the restrooms that you could get the same-sized facility in, not that one, the other one. Yeah, there. Now, those tennis courts, actually I talked to Jeff Elliott the other day about this, and he said they're not quite ready for that conversation, and I, and that was helpful. But if you see down here in the corner, that that's roughly the same size of facility that you have at Tinsley Park. If you were to go, and basically, we have to redo that concrete over at Tinsley Park, is that we would, are playing with the option of moving our skate park over there and dress it up and make it a part of that environment, and then building three sand volleyball courts where the skate park is now. We would have this constructed first with the new equipment and kind of a new version of the skate park, and I know that, I know Duane, you have some friends that are, like, not friends, people you know, that actively use that. And, and not looking for any huge feedback, but just looking at this as a possibility of moving that, it's a little bit closer to the Greenway, which there's a lot of skateboard traffic on the Greenway, there's parking there, and basically you would all have net and court activities at Tinsley Park. And I'm not really selling it, I'm just throwing it out there for people's thoughts.
Can you show where you, I can see.
I'm sorry.
Where are you proposing to move the skate park?
This is, this is the Raider Drive building. Greenway Park is right here.
Gotcha.
And you would put it right behind the restrooms back here, and it fits there. This is all future stuff, and I talked to Jeff, and he said they weren't ready for that yet.
In comparison to the footprint it is currently, what, what's, what are we looking, is it similar, same?
It's the same. Is it?
No, first drawn was the exact same, but actually first drawn was a little bigger. That one's a little smaller.
This one's a little smaller, but you can put the same size on there.
Yeah, the other drawing shows.
And we would have new equipment there and working on that. So it's just something to think about, and we'll bring it back for conversation later. And just kind of just putting it out there. So any more thoughts or comments or questions?
Joe, I do.
Yeah.
I'm glad we're keeping it from wherever it was. The equipment matters, it really does, and a different kind of equipment. And I do think we have people in town who would like some input into that. Some of them are here today. There are my friends.
My neighbors.
Not just people I know, yeah, our neighbors and friends are here who know a lot more about this than we do, and I'd love to set them up with Patty on the front end before we ever.
And that, and we knew that, I knew that you had had interest in, and I know Duane had had interest in that, and that's why what we wanted to start is start the conversation. Our goal is, would to have no loss of use of the current facilities, that this would be built first, we would buy new equipment, look at what that is, and then go from there. Or some new equipment, I guess.
I think with, with some input from the city and people that are involved in that community, I think it's a great idea with it being built first as well. Obviously, the one we have now is in rough shape. The addition of volleyball courts would be great over at Tinsley. I do want to point out, there is a, there is a Tesla Charger right there in the skate section, so I don't know if that can be moved to like a parking spot.
Yeah. Is it working now? In the past, it hadn't worked.
It's very slow. It's very slow, but I've, I had people there actually about two weeks ago from out of town.
Really?
And that was the only spot. I let them know Target's coming, but.
Target's open.
Oh, is it open now? Okay. I haven't, since it's been open, but, but yeah, they were from out of town and.
That one shows up on the map.
It shows up on the map.
The Greenway Charger shows up on your EV.
Well, we'll certainly, we'll certainly make that a part of the thing. So what I would propose is that we do some work, and if there's anyone recommended that we work with or talk to, we'll put our heads together and bring back a better master plan and something for the council to really look at. So just shoot me an email when you get a chance. We were able, we did receive some, an energy grant from the federal government, and we've implemented that. We put in some HVAC units at the fire station. Actually, the fire department got that, most of that, so basically they gave us about $70,000 some thousand, and we were able to sink it into redoing a lot of our current equipment, and there'll probably be some cost savings for that. That's just been cleared up, and we appreciate that. I'm not gonna go through the taxing from financing at this time. And any other questions before I start the, going through the agenda?
Any comments or questions from the council, from Mr. Fivas? Let's proceed.
All right. We have at 6A, we have a public hearing on the fiscal year '26 budget. We have 6B is a public hearing to hear public comments from Duane Goff and Oasis subdivision GP for consideration of ordinance to zone 13.43 acres located at Pleasant Grove Church Road and CH Highway to R2 and multifamily zoning district. I think what Robert explained is that this is just mostly a cleanup of some zoning that happened previous to some changes, and it's a cleanup, and Robert will talk about that. Is that right, Robert?
Yes.
Item 6C is to hear public comments concerning a request by Jason Farmer and Masana Investments to amend PUD 23 and PUD 41 to allow a right-of-way connection between two developments. If you look at, we have a very large development off of Minus Road, and we have another large development off of, what's in front of Jonathan? What's in front of Whirlpool?
Dirkie?
Dirkie, Dirkie. In front of Dirkie Road, and, and basically they have agreed to allow a connection in the back of there, and you have some maps of that in the back, that allows them to connect those two neighborhoods so they can access Minus or Dirkie. That type of connectivity will be helpful, so that's what that item does. Item 6D is to hear public comments, request by Joe Moore to amend PUD 44 to remove pool and clubhouse amenities. I think they have put a pavilion in. So, so before, there was a much higher density, which tripped some of our requirements for a pool and a clubhouse. It has been downzoned, so the amenities, I think they're, they're gonna put in a little pavilion with a little barbecue area for these townhomes. Item 6E is to hear a public hearing, public comments concerning a request by Don Ledford for the consideration of the ordinance to zone 31.45 acres located at Sequoia Road. Basically, I think they're doing storage there, behind there, so it's low-traffic redevelopment. Item 6G, public hearing to hear public comments concerning the request of First Baptist staff and council for consideration of a plan of service, resolution to annex and a zone to zone 47 acres off of Stewart Road into the city. We have item H, which is to hear public comments concerning the request by City of Cleveland for the consideration of ordinance to amend Cleveland City Municipal Code Appendix C to add our, you are urban single-family residential zoning district, and Robert will come and explain that. Then you'll have the last public hearing, which is to hear public comments concerning the request of the City of Cleveland to consideration to amend the Cleveland City Municipal Code Appendix C to delete Section 2.12 of the ISC District and replace with Section 2.22 mixed-use coordination or coordinator zoning district. Robert will come and give you all the information you need on that. Then you have 7A, which is an item that was already previously passed by the council. It's a zoning ordinance 2517, request by Tom Kate for the consideration of an area to amend Area 3 of PUD 48. We have item 7B, which has already been heard by the council on one reading, 2518, concerning a request by City Fields and Tyler Price for the consideration ordinance to abandon a section right-of-way at Winnetonka and Aurora. And item C, this has also been heard by the city council to hear request by the Epperson Allison Homes for consideration ordinance to zone about five acres or more for property at Old Freewill Road from FAR unincorporated to R1 to PUD 4064. Then you have 7D, Resolution 2539 approving fiscal year '26 appropriations, Resolution 2540 regarding the City City Schools Federal Project Fund. Item 7F, Resolution 2541, annual review of the city debt management policy. All three of those items are normal items that we have when we approve and go through the budget, except for the, that's correct. Item 7G is directing the payment by Cleveland Utilities Board to the City of Cleveland Tax Implement Payment for the Cleveland Utilities Board of Electric, Water and Wastewater System. That's an item that we generally will have as well. Item 7H is a Resolution 2543 authorizing the mayor to sign a contract amendment, number three, for TDOT for 25th Street corridor area. We have a 10-foot multi-area path going down 25th Street. Basically, it extends that project, continue to work on that. Item I, Resolution 2544, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract amendment two with TDOT relating to the resurfacing and safety on Paul Huff Parkway and Stewart Road. Item J, motion designating depositories of the City of Cleveland. K is a contract extension for plumbing services, a maintenance contract for additional one-year term with Troy Goodacre Plumbing. That is already bid out, and there was an option year, which we're accepting that option year. We have a contractual extension of electrical services, maintenance contract for additional one-year term with Conley Electric, same option that has already been bid out, and this is us accepting that option year. Item M is Resolution 2550, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Alliance to provide employee assistant program services to the city. This is EAP. If there's someone, if there's any employee or any member of a family who need to talk to a counseling professional, we offer those services confidentially for free. We've had a provider in the past, and we've talked to a few different people, and this company is well thought of and interviewed very well, and this would change those services starting on August 1st. And it's, from what I'm told, it's actually less cost than the previous one. Better service, less cost is a good combination. Item N, 2551, amending the personnel rules and reservations for time off and leave of absence related to military service, just updating our policies for those areas. Item O, we've had some organizational changes, so we're just renaming who, what, who appoints these positions on this committee. Item P, authorizing the city staff to engage in mynuga.com for jet port website redesign and maintenance. We had brought this item before, and it was, it was $14,000 and several thousand a year, and now they've gotten it down to much less of the cost, and the annual maintenance fee is less. I think, I think they'll give us some more versatility with that. Item Q, a motion approving the proposal from MHM for the furniture fixtures and equipment packaged by the city hall, council chambers, projects for the use of governmental procurement cooperatives. Essentially, this is for our new building, going through a process. There are government contracts that will allow us to work with MHM to securing some of the equipment, furniture for that, for that facility. Then we have item R, a motion to authorize the mayor to sign change order, number two, with APAC Atlantis, which is Tally Construction. Tally Construction changed their name to APAC Atlantic, and this is on Paul Huff Parkway. One thing that, in the bidding documents that were approved by TDOT, we should have had thermoplastic lines put out there, and right now they're painted on, which would be normal. We, this is upgrading our normal, what we'd do on a normal road to provide thermoplastic just for the high visibility and the safety aspects of that. So the good part, it's about $130,000, and it's about 80% paid by the federal government. So I think it's a good investment. Motion authorizing a letter to be sent to the Army Corps of Engineers canceling the Tinsley Army Corps projects. This, we had talked about this, and there's the sample letter in, that there's several things going, and, and they had, they had talked about going and doing some work on the Tinsley side, and this really has nothing to do with that. We think that they're getting pressure from the federal government to get some of their contracts done, and this, this project was gonna take a while because there was some challenges that they had. Their challenges aren't necessarily our challenges, so we think that we can come back at a later time and do something similar to do this and, and save about $3 million and be able to close out the programs. So this is essentially saying, we're not gonna do the Tinsley project, but we have all the designs and all the calculations, and we kind of know what it is and what it's not. But we still have our projects going on for William Street and, can't remember where the other one is. William Street?
Mblot.
Yep. And so those are ongoing, getting those done. And there's approval of streetlight guidelines. This really doesn't make any changes in how we do that, other than in the downtown area, we're trying to have, we have guidelines for street lighting that are maximums. This would allow city staff to, you know, you have the decorative lights going down Inman Street. We wanted to put some more decorative lights going down Church Street, closer together, and this will allow us to, to do that and make that happen. Moving on to new business and.
Mayor, may I ask, is there time constraints to forego the new business that we can not review yet because it was the same as the.
Yeah, I'm gonna skip, I'm gonna skip through that.
Okay.
So item A is to amending the fiscal year 2025 budget. Item B is the ordinance 2522, which was adopting the fiscal '26 budget. That will be adopted. It's a balanced budget. Obviously, there are schools here to have conversations, and we have some conversations about, are there other things that we may want to do? O are ones that already went in in the public hearings. Item P is, we're correcting a clerical error on PUD 63 that should have been 50, but we had 38 in the PUD, so it's just correcting that. And then we have a conversation on the council, discussion and possible action on community investments, and that's all I have at this time. at this time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fivas, for the review of that agenda abbreviated per Councilman Casta's recommendation, which I fully support. Before you get away, Mr. Fivas, any questions or comments from the council on the review of the agenda at 3 o'clock? All right. Seeing none, we will then go to the 1 o'clock report from council. We'll begin with Councilman Moore.
Speaking of the Army Corps of Engineers, Jonathan, Robert, do you remember that, are you here? Do you remember that address where they kind of dredged out the creek behind those folks' houses off their weeds?
It's on Pine Drive. Yeah.
Half of those houses, they can't access their backyards to mow.
Well...
We haven't fixed them.
Yeah. We've had an ongoing problem.
Okay.
And we had talked this week about a solution.
Yes. One of the houses has a ramp that's installed for it, but just one.
Well, the Corps of Engineers went to the fence and did a severe cut.
Right.
And so those people had been entering their backyards to mow from that area. Now they can't get up in it.
Right.
And, you know, we tried to...
We have a fix, but we have to wait until the Army Corps closes their project out because if we go and modify their project, they will lose their homes. So we've talked to a few of those homeowners and I know we're supposed to be scheduled on meeting with them. We want to go over what, we'll have to go back in and make it where they can access their backyards again.
Yeah.
But we can't do it till after the Army Corps closes their project out.
We're voting today to terminate...
The Tinsley.
Okay.
Right, but can we get them to fix it before they hit the road?
They won't fix it.
They won't fix it. That's the problem.
That's the problem. We've gone back and forth and argued with them and they will not fix it because when we go in and fix it, we change their drainage calculations and they're pretty rigid.
Talking grass up here.
Yeah, I had one of them contact me. We need a sec. It's not good. We know it's not good. We're trying to get them closed out so we can...
Yeah.
Oh, no, no.
Okay. Councilwoman McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a call from someone off of 18th Street concerning water and the drainage in that area. The other day, when the water was up so high, they were very concerned that it was going to come on over into their house. And they mentioned a drain that was stopped up behind 565 18th Street and wanted to know if that could be cleaned out. There's a lot of debris in it. And so I don't know if that drain is something the city would, you know, be able to do or if that's a homeowner issue.
We'll look at that tomorrow and if it can be, if it is that drain, we'll clean it out tomorrow.
Yeah, I drove by there earlier. It is, it does have a lot of debris in it. And they also asked to just check, I know we, the city checked one of the drains over there around 18th Street, but they also asked that some of the other drains between Deer Park and 18th Street to be checked, just to see if there's any thing stopping those drains up. They just feel like they're getting quite a bit of water. Possibly something could be done about that.
Tommy, did you get that?
Yes, sir.
We'll look at the...
We'll take care of it tomorrow.
Okay, and then another issue is, it kind of relates to the issue we were discussing earlier off of 17th Street, but it's more along the lines of Georgetown Road, actually going from Harrison Pike all the way over to 25th Street, if you follow Georgetown Road, that whole distance. On the right side, going north on Georgetown Road and then where it splits at Peerless and Georgetown Fortinias. That's very curvy from Georgetown, Peerless, over to West Side Drive. And it's marked 35 speed. And someone wanted to know if that could be studied and possibly the speed through there dropped, especially because of all the curviness and all the roads that are coming into that street, that section of 25th Street. And of course, I shared some signs, pictures of signs with the office where some people have come around those curves too fast, taken out some signs. I myself almost got rear-ended there in those curves. So I'm just asking for a study to be done on maybe possibly reducing the speed, especially through that curvy area. And then going at 25th Street and coming back, coming south on Georgetown Road. I drove down through there the other day and I didn't really see any speed signs at all. So I'm wondering if that could be looked at and again, the speed possibly even being reduced all along that whole section from Harrison Pike to 25th Street on Georgetown, to reduce that speed because that's really becoming a problem area. And again, especially where the curvy areas are. But I would also like to see some speed limits and possibly reduced speed limits put on Georgetown going south. And I appreciate that.
David said, "No problem."
I know David appreciates me, but also on a good note, we did have the tire take-back over this weekend. That's with Keep America Beautiful, right at the County Sheriff's Department in Cleveland City and Stormwater. And we had 644 tires recycled in this take-back, which is the most we've ever had. And if you multiply that times two, because we do this two times a year, that's over 1,000 tires that are not thrown out on our streets. They're recycled. So I just want to say that I'm really thankful that we're doing that take-back problem, that tire take-back, eliminating that problem. Thank you.
Sir?
I want to give Marcia a lot of credit for, she's really been a leader in the tire issue. We used to have tires on a weekly, if not a daily basis, and we've seen huge decreases in the amount of illegal dumping, a lot of working with Bradley, Cleveland Bradley, beautiful, what is it?
Keep Cleveland, Bradley County.
I'm sorry. It's been a long day.
Beautiful.
But I know that you talk to me about that a lot, but I think, I really think that we've really had a lot of progress in that area. I appreciate all your work.
I think we have, and I'm so thankful for the program and I hope it continues because this is an ongoing issue.
And the city does cosponsor that.
Yes. Thank you, Councilwoman McKenzie. The tires are, we're grateful for your help.
Councilman Estes?
Thanks, Joe. Thank you for taking us to Moorestown. Very helpful to see it. I came away very different in my opinions and understanding and it was worth every, it was worth the trip very much. So, second, Kathy Andrews? Yes, Kathy. In the future, on CBG funding, on the south side of the community center, 14th Street Southeast, I'll get you a map between Church and Euclid. We could really use a small little patch of sidewalk. I know, Marcia, you and I both got that email this week and some pictures. I'll get that address to you, but just in the next cycle of CBG funding, it would fit perfectly. It's a small little piece of sidewalk for people that are going to the community center. I know maybe in this budget, if we're looking at expanding city recreation, maybe that will be thought through. So just so we coordinate all of that and think through that, I'll get that to you.
We got the email, I think I was looking at it with Ms. Marcia, and I didn't know where it was at.
So it's right between Church and Euclid. It faces the old Whirlpool 3 into the, if you look north, it faces the community center. On the other side of the swimming pool, Swim Pool is...
It didn't have an address with it, so I was...
It was obvious though, with so many people walking down through there that it's neighbor.
Right. And Brian Turner, since you're the fire chief today, I have the community shield for you, recognizing the winning fire department, sorry, Captain, on the 65 Roses. So I'll get that to you to put up in the fire hall.
Jeremiah is here.
Okay. Sorry, I did say Jeremiah earlier. I always give to the chief. Sorry. Jonathan, I know that Robert's waiting on a phase, a call about phase six. Will we be held up by anything else once that call comes?
Should be.
For property acquisition? NEPA? NEPA's good?
NEPA's good. We may have to update it at some point, but it's good right now, yeah.
Can we just make sure we're ready to go so we don't get caught again on calendars like that again? I appreciate it. To my colleagues, we've been talking to the planning commission and one of the things that we voted on this past month, Robert, if I get this wrong, correct me, 2.5 acres in an R1 can no longer go, it has to be 2.5 acres or more to go cluster, correct? In an R1. As long as we have cluster, allowing cluster developments in R1, R2, R3, we might as well not even have R1, R2, R3. And so we're looking at changing not just two and a half acres, because one of the issues before us that they got, this, I don't know where it's going to sit, couple, you know, it's going to be more than two and a half acres, is it cluster or not? What can you do by right? By right now, you can have three acres in any R1, tear it all down and make clusters. And we're talking seven and a half to eight and a half homes per acre. And it's becoming, it's something that needs to be addressed. Again, it really emasculates R1, R2, R3. So just a heads up, if you have any thoughts on that, please let Robert know, please let Joe know. It's something that we're, I think it has a very big impact on us going forward as we look at redeveloping properties.
Bill, how did you decide on the two and a half?
I will defer to Robert. That was a city staff recommendation. And I'll let Robert tell him how the city landed there if you...
Well, it was... Before, it was much smaller than that. We looked at option going up all the way to 10, 5, but then you start talking about more of our urban spaces and smaller lots downtown and not trying to completely do away with or stifle this type of development because the purpose of a cluster is that you're supposed to set aside valuable open space. Whether that, you know, so you're maybe not having to completely clear-cut or flatten a piece of property. You've got some natural vegetation or wetlands, steep slope you could preserve. This allows you to do so and reduce the lot sizes. So what we looked at two and a half, why we landed there is because based on the open space requirements, it became, at that point, we're getting something worthwhile as opposed to before it would end up being, you know, some very small pieces that nobody owns and we have code enforcement issues, et cetera. So we landed at 2.5 because that's the threshold where the open space became reasonable, if that makes sense.
And while Robert's here, hey, the urban R1 zoning designation, man, it's going to solve some real problems in college, too.
And it's a true answer to what I was just talking about.
It is, it's one of the best things to come along.
Targeted in truly urban areas.
Correct.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Casta?
Yes, Mayor. Marcia, I do want to thank you for all your work. You came on as a tire person and you've made a difference in our community and quality of life. So I do want to give you notes on that. Mayor, other thing is, for the City of Cleveland and the residents of Third District, I would encourage them to get out on Georgetown Road from Candy's Creek Bridge all the way out to Hopewell. It is finished. So if you want to access and see what Highway 60 is going to look like, it's a good time to do it. Now, there's still, from back to the middle school, a lot of Band-Aids, a lot of things they're doing. So hopefully by the school year, it'll be up and running and more functional on that part and getting kids in and out. So I want to thank the TDOT and the state for that project that's coming to an end.
It looks great.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on schedule.
Good words, Councilman Casta. Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Councilman May?
Yeah. Joe, on the vote today, we're opting out on the Corps of Engineers from Tinsley Park. What else do they like that they haven't completed?
There's a tension pond on William Street and then kind of behind the Ravelry area we were talking about.
So do we have a timetable when they'll be complete and be out?
Yeah, they're bidding that out, yeah.
And they're also bidding out Blunt Avenue's channel wide from behind, you know, kind of...
They still like quite a bit.
Yeah, they have two projects left.
I mean, we're probably talking a year before they'll be out.
Totally, yes.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
But it probably would have been, if you don't get rid of the Tinsley project, it's probably three years or more.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Goff?
I'm going to hold mine until 3 o'clock station.
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor Webb?
Nothing, Mayor.
Thank you. And I did have one addition. I mentioned it to Councilman Estes and Jonathan, so thank you both. It's Mrs. Alice Turner, 722 First Street, and some severe flooding. And I've got pictures that I'm going to email both of you and coming down First Street towards her corner of First and Gott. And I'll get those copied to both of you. Thank you for that help in that situation. Takes us to item five on the 1 o'clock agenda, which is announcements. There are none. It takes us to item number six, which is adjournment.